Hi, Mary. I hope you're feeling well.
Well, not really, but.
As good as possible, then.
Yep.
So we've got. Let's get ourselves called to order. I was just on a meeting with Nancy Goodlow and Nancy Lilquist, who just ran away. But let's call ourselves to order and then, do we need to do a roll call?
Yes, we should.
So if the clerk would call the roll.
Morgan.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Engel.
Here.
Lilquist.
Here.
Tab.
Here.
Does not look like Nancy Goodlow is here yet.
She's probably struggling to get on. Is, let's, let me see. Come on. Ben, I'm not getting. It's not opening my attendees list for some reason.
Commissioner Waxsmith is here, if that's what you're wondering.
Yeah, no, I was looking to see who else was here. Thank you. Okay, so let's, I'd like to welcome everybody. This is a special. City of Ellensburg Special Council Meeting for Monday, November 23rd. This meeting is called for consideration of to authorize the mayor's signature on a letter to Governor Inslee regarding the new statewide COVID-19 restrictions. There was an agenda published, which also included the proposed letter. We have Commissioner Waxsmith, who I think is still the chair. Here also, to answer questions, if there are questions specific about the commissioner's actions and and/or the intent of the letter or general support. As we go into the conversation, I would note that a similar letter has been distributed to all the other, to the other municipalities. Clayellum, South Clayellum, Roslin, and Kititas. Those councils have indicated that they will be considering the letter either tonight or tomorrow. For it to take potential action. I don't know, excuse me, I don't know what those, what those actions would be at this point. They're going through a very similar process. I note, just for the role that council member Goodlow is with us.
Yes, I am here.
So with that, we could just start a conversation if you'd like. Or we can frame it a little bit more, again, if we, if, if you'd like, in terms of just context and information.
I had some comments, questions. I could start if you'd like.
Yeah, sure, Dave.
Okay. Yeah, so I went through the letter and thank you for putting that together, Bruce. So just a couple of things, and I don't want to put Tristan on the spot, but I was just curious. At the end of the second paragraph, there's some statistics stated. I guess I'd be satisfied if Tristan agreed that those statements are accurate, as of today. The. I don't need exact numbers, but I just wanted maybe something that's changed since the letter was drafted.
Are we talking about local hospital capacity?
That is part of it. And then there's an out and out statement that there's no evidence of community spread. And part of my question is, there's a lot of reference to community spread, and there's also reference to the fact that there's a surge, or there's an expected surge, but still no community spread, so.
I mean, community.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I think what the letter, that's a good catch, David, because I think what that letter really means is that there was no secondary transmission, because actually, community spread, as defined by the CDC, is just spreading easily and sustainably in the community, which, which is what is happening.
Okay.
So that is, that is a good catch.
I guess my, my only point on that is, we want to be accurate. And I don't have words on that, but I just wanted to point that out.
You are a budding epidemiologist, because you're correct. That would be inaccurate at this time.
Okay. The other, at the end of the third paragraph, similar statement, declarative statement, we're committed to contain community spread as cases increase. So again, same, same distinction, cases are increasing without spread, or we're somehow containing it even though the cases are increasing. I'm not quite clear on the meeting there in terms of a, an absolute conclusion. But I'll move on, we can come back to that later. The one, two, three, four, fifth, fifth paragraph, next to the bottom. Second, second sentence, I just think the word choice, I don't like the word undermines. I would prefer something like limits or reduces. I think undermine suggests that this is intentional. And I just don't care for that word. And then, I think in the last paragraph, it sums up the intent locally very well. It seems to be all about the fact that we are supporting all the local efforts of individuals and businesses, but we fail to acknowledge that the governor is providing a public service as well. And I just think that we ought to acknowledge the fact that they're in a tough spot, and the measures may not be universally applicable, but I think they're doing what they think they need to do in light of what appears to be a growing public health crisis. I think the messaging part of this is potentially problematic, in that a lot of the community outreach or out response has been, I know this is not the commissioner's intent, according to our cog meeting the other night, but I think that there is a belief that this is local government telling the state, the governor particularly, butt out, this is our business, you don't have any right to speak here. I know that's not the intent of the letter, but I know that there will be people that, no matter how it's written, will, will make that, will make that influence. So I'd like to see something that's sort of more collaborative. We appreciate the effort. The governor's invested in this. We feel like we can refine this and do it better. That's just kind of my overview. I, overall, I support local government having more control in the decision-making, as long as it's data-based. And then it strikes me that, I know we can't control the timing of this, and I know it's crushing local businesses, but we're, it appears that if what we're reading every day is true around the state and the country, and potentially in our community, we're going to see a surge in the next few weeks because of the transmission that's occurring. It really doesn't have anything to do with businesses. I get that. It's the personal one-on-one. But it just strikes me that this is going to fall on deaf ears, because at the end of the day, I don't think it matters how it spreads, because if it spreads, you know, that, I think the reality is that the rules and the requirements are being driven by, by, you know, things that are out of our control. And I know we can't change that. It's important, I agree, to make a statement, but you know, at some point, the fact is, the rules that are foisted upon us are because people are not doing, not enough people are doing a good enough job controlling this. And it isn't the businesses that have, you know, taken steps to social distance and open safely. It's people walking around without masks, ignoring recommendations, not social distancing, and I know they're few in number, very few in number. But I just feel like as a community, as a, whether it's a city or the county, I think this is, that's an area where we could be stronger. So I'll shut it.
No, that's great. I appreciate it. Mary, you trying to, yeah?
So I want to go back to the question about capacity at the hospital. I'm confused by it. I don't, I don't know what 20% of what, or 0% of what. And the reason I'm asking that, as you all know, I just had a bad accident the other day. I have spent eight days inside healthcare system in one form or another. And I know that when I was in Wenatchee, they were very concerned. I asked the hospitalist and the other doctors about it. They're, they're setting themselves up with separate sections of the hospital. And what really got my attention was when a friend called me and said, "If you had to have an accident, thank God you had it now and not in two to four weeks, because you might not have been able to get treated." And I said, "What?" Because obviously, I hadn't been following the news. He said, "The way things are going, Yakima is basically at capacity," because we called, they called Yakima to try to get me into an ortho unit. They couldn't take me. Ellensburg didn't have anybody available to do surgery for two days. So I get sent to Wenatchee. I'm really grateful I was sent up there, and I had wonderful care and treatment. But I don't want people to have a heart attack and not be able to get care. And that's my big fear. And us sitting here saying, "Don't do anything to us," just really annoys me. Anyway, can you explain the 20 and zero, please?
So I can, I can say why it was included, and then Tristan may be able to clarify. This came out of the original letter, and then Brett might also want to just jump in, but the, that the the 20% of licensed beds, I believe, would be the beds that are just simply occupied generally at the hospital. So there's 80%, 80% of the beds at the hospital currently are not being utilized, for whatever reason. The 0% of licensed bed occupied COVID-19 was, came from, actually, Dr. Larson's reports that at this time, to your point, it could change, that there was, there were, at the time that this was written, there was no one in those beds designated for COVID-19 patients in our hospital. I don't know the number, and, and one of the statements, and that goes to what this is attempting to articulate, that Dr. Larson has indicated is that our KVH at this point is not overwhelmed at the same level that Seattle hospitals, King County hospitals apparently seem to be. And I haven't heard about Yakima. Tristan may have information about that. And I do know that we took non, I think it was not, I don't know the characterization, but non-critical Yakima patients during the first surge, because they were at capacity, into the COVID beds at KVH. So the statement here is simply that our hospital itself is not, is not stressed in terms of capacity, nor are those resources that have been dedicated to COVID-19 stressed, which again, is very different than apparently the experience of the healthcare system, particularly on the West Side. So that's, that's where those numbers came from. Tristan, I don't, if I got it wrong, then speak up.
I, well, I can wait for Mary. She looked like she had some more.
I want to add a question to that, is how many hospital beds total are we talking about? Because, I, I mean, it wouldn't take, I don't think we have a very big hospital, and my guess is that it wouldn't take very long to run right over us. But let me see what Tristan, Tristan says.
Yeah, Mary, we don't have a very big hospital. It's a critical access hospital, which means it's 25% or 25-bed capacity usually, but since COVID, they were authorized emergency surge capacity. So I think they have 60 or 70 beds now licensed that they can handle. So it is bigger than usual, but no, we do not have a big hospital. The numbers have updated slightly since whenever that was written today we were at, or two days ago, because that's when the dashboard is. This, all the hospitals have to report their data to the state as well. They were at 28% beds occupy, licensed bed, beds occupied, and Mayor Tab is right, that's any bed for any reason, and 2% occupied by COVID. We do worry about our hospitals, basically, the transport patterns in our region for our hospital and our neighbors. We don't have every resource. We do rely on Yakima quite a bit for some cardiac resources, and clearly, we go to Seattle a bit. Yakima is not over 80% or over the 10% goals right now, but they are close, they're at 75% licensed beds occupied, 8.2% beds occupied by COVID-19. And then, King County is our other major transport, and it looks like they are at, they're faring better than Yakima right now, 63.6% licensed beds occupied and 5% COVID. So I think I answered your questions, Mary.
Yes.
Nancy's, and then Stacy's.
So implicit in this letter and in David's statement is an assumption that people are getting COVID through home spread and not business spread. And how do we know that? Do we know that? Is that verifiable some way?
So what I'd like to, what I'd like to say to everyone always is that the only way to know for sure would be some high-tech viral genome sequencing. And we're not doing that. We're not actually linking it. We don't know anything, for sure. Contact tracing gives us some insight. And Dr. Larson, bless his heart, just spent many, many hours going through every case we ever got, trying to determine where they came from. He's writing up a report, or trying, trying to determine where they think it came from. Because again, we have done no sequencing about how, how this is actually spreading. So it's all fairly a best guess. And he is writing up a report today that would hopefully go to the commissioners today or tomorrow. He does have a few other things going on, so he's working on it as quickly as he can. And there are some businesses implicated. There's a lot of workplaces. A lot of places have been impacted because people have to go to work. There's been some bars, there's been some restaurants, but I think it was less than a couple dozen out of the whole thousand cases that we'd had. So it's really, it's really just, I think almost anyone for any case could argue about this data. I, I don't think it's, as incredibly enlightening as we're all hoping it comes from, what was really obvious to Dr. Larson when he reviewed this data is that it doesn't matter where they were or what they were doing. They all did the same, they all had the same behavior. They were having close, prolonged contact without masks. And you can do that at a restaurant, you can do that at work, you can do that at home.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to comment on that, because I think, I still personally don't understand the, I get all the social distancing applications in restaurants when tables are separated, and that helps. But when you put four people around one table, if they're not related, how's that any different than inviting half the neighborhood to your house for Thanksgiving dinner? You know what I mean? It just, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to me that that, I know it can, it, it reduces exposure, but I don't think it's anywhere near safe.
Yeah, so if I may, let me do a couple of things. Stacy, I want to get to you. David, I appreciate the insight. Brett is going to need to go back into another meeting that he jumped out of to do this. Did you want to make, kind of say anything that will stir the pot up incredibly and then go away?
That's what I love to do, Bruce, and I'm good at it. I do it with a smile, at least. Well, yeah, so I guess, speaking from where the commissioners are coming from, when we saw the statewide mandate come out a week ago, this last Sunday, we really thought it was an arbitrary move in our minds to just shut down restaurants and gyms and penalize businesses. That to Tristan's point, at this time, we didn't know if there was spread or not spread there. So we, and to Mary's point about the letter saying, "Don't do anything to us," that has never been the intent of the commissioners. We've had conversations with Dr. Larson and Tristan in her role of public health, and we have made sure that we're not stepping on their toes. They know their, I hope, should know that they, and feel supported from the Board of County Commissioners. I feel like we're all on the same page. But as commissioners and as council members, I think we have to look at not just the public health side of things, too. There are, have been winners and losers in this, and so that's why we put the letter together the way it was. So I don't know if there are specific questions from the county.
Well, I, I did. So has the, have, have the commissioners already sent a letter, or is this the, the letter you were signing on to?
We, we agreed to sign the letter at this morning's commissioner's admin meeting.
Okay. And.
Just, just to be clear now, Nancy, the, the letter that, that was approved is slightly different than this.
Yeah, so whatever's approved, we were talking about doing a special meeting on Wednesday after the councils for all the other municipalities had a chance to meet.
So we could propose edits per David's community spread versus secondary?
Yep. What I wanted to have today was making sure that the Board of County Commissioners was in favor of signing a letter, which they are. So we can send them to a letter once admitted, edited, I guess.
And if, and if our edits are material, or feel, if we feel like there's a change, the, the intent was to have all sign one letter, but we certainly can submit a City of Ellensburg letter that goes in with whatever else the other municipalities do.
And we've done this once before, earlier this summer, I think with Twin City Foods, the county reached out to the municipalities, and I think CWU and KVH and others.
Can, can I ask you a question? So I saw a news report, at least, that the county had agreed to sue the state. Is that no longer hap? I mean, what's become of that? So I'm feeling like, wait a minute, you guys said you were going to sue the state, so now I'm confused.
Yeah, so Mary, we never said we were going to sue the state. We were looking at the options available to us. There's no lawsuit at this time. So I don't know where you heard the news article.
There, there was a press release from you guys saying, talking about exploring the options of lawsuits, which.
Thank you, Nancy.
In the context of the protest out in front of the courthouse last week, if I recall, reporting on that.
Well, I think, I think that the news release that I saw was simply that there was a potential, they were exploring, as Brett said, that they were exploring the potential of possible legal action.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I won't get into all the details. But if we were able to look back at the contact tracing and show that it was arbitrary, that might give some sort of credence to what we could do through the prosecutor's office. But the court system, I mean, and this meeting's not about all that, is extremely slow, and it's something that we don't necessarily want to go down that path anyways. But to talk about your options, I think is a fine conversation to have amongst a board or a council.
I have a question. Just, I don't want to get sidetracked, but has there been any conversation at the commissioner level and/or vis-à-vis public health about strengthening the mask mandate? Are we limited legally? Do we not have the power to do that? And if we, if there isn't any limitation, has there been any conversation about doing that? Seems to me that we're, we're kind of, we're, we're being penalized. Businesses in, in our community, in our county are being penalized by a less-than-stellar level of compliance with non-mandatory rules. I wondered if there's any thought about.
That would be important. Tristan has her hand up, but that's a good point. Because we, that's why schools were exempted from this recent order. We've, we've been able to socially distance. Kids are wearing their masks, and they're not seeing the spread in the schools. I'm seeing, nod her head. So I think what I'm saying is correct.
Yeah, what you're saying, what you're saying about the schools is, has been great. They're, for the most part, and there are exceptions, students with developmental disabilities, where masking and distancing isn't, isn't always an option. They don't have the same protections.
I was talking about. Yeah, I get.
For the masking mandate, David, sorry, let me, so he's right about the schools. Let me, that's been a conversation, that local level, state levels, federally, of course. People have been asking for things like that. Both, basically what we're dealing with, I mean, it's a pretty stiff mandate at the state level. It's a, it's not just a fine, it's like a crime. It's like a misdemeanor or something. Enforcement.
Okay, oh, okay.
Not masking. But it is the enforcement of that, that is.
I'm sorry.
There's been arguments about whether or not it is even really enforceable, the volume that's required, and then also whether or not law enforcement agencies have the resources that they need in order to actually enforce that. So I know we have, at Public Health, have worked with local law enforcement, and they're on our side, trying education through enforcement, but I don't think there's been anything more than education as enforcement. And that is a bit beyond the ability of public health right now, but I agree, if people wore their masks, we might not be here.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think the, again, the point that the, the requirements that are being created, blanket or not, are being driven by the fact that society-wise, we're not handling this as well as we could. So I think a lot of people are, and businesses included, are doing a very good job in our community and the county. And a lot of people are, but I tell you, I, it, it just, I don't know, and you know, we're supposed to not be offended by people that don't wear masks. We're not supposed to be, you know, confrontational. But you know, when people start getting mad about the rules that are being dropped on us from above, they really need to look around and look in their own, in my view, they need to look at their own situation and.
David, if I may, I want to be sensitive to Brett's.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, it's good. I mean, it's part of the conversation. Were there any other questions while we, while, while Commissioner Waxsmith is here, of him, or the commissioners' actions?
Anything you want to say nice to the commissioners, I could take back, feel free.
We'll wait till you go to say the bad crap.
I was going to say, thank you for your leadership on this. We appreciate it. We really do.
Yeah, thanks.
No, I'm not, I'm not being sarcastic. I, I know you and public health are working diligently on this, and
Dude.
All in it together.
I, I just said dude, but dude, I would like to give mad props to our Board of County Commissioners. We have not always been on the same page, public health and B.O.C.C. But there are some jurisdictions where there are no conversations being had. And we both work with each other, understanding that we have different roles when it comes to serving the public. And, and I am full of the, I'm grateful for this community, because at least we're still willing to have hard conversations together.
You know, just to build on that, too, we were on the economic recovery call on Friday, and Kirk Holmes, who does a lot of work with emergency management around, really around the region right now, Tristan's observation, or Tristan's observation is not just around the communication between the Health Department and the commissioners, but it's between municipalities and the Health Department and the commissioners. It's between the chamber, the downtown associations, the private business people. I mean, part of the genesis of this letter is that as we've listened to what's occurring in other counties, we are, we are, we have been communicating and supporting each other in ways that other counties have not even begun to approach. And I think that's part of what this is simply saying, in terms of recognizing the effort and the collaboration and partnerships that have been built. I mean, the school district with, with the Health Department, CWU and their willingness to work with the commissioners, with the Health Department. It's not a model that you'd find, I mean, I'm glad you were in Shalane Douglas, honestly, or in Yakima, you know, or in the Tri-Cities. It's not happening. And, and I think that's a part of what, what this letter was simply trying to articulate. So anyway.
I want to thank you, Bruce, for putting that together. I know there's a lot of wordsmithing and nitpicking, but appreciate the effort and the focus. I do.
Okay, no, it's good. So I think Brett, we're good if you need to jump off. Stacy, I want to get to your comment, because I know you've been sitting on it, so.
Yeah, I wanted to just kind of build on the conversation. I would agree with the changes that David has recommended. I also think, I mean, if you just look at this from a negotiating standpoint, if we're really trying to have this letter be effective, I think mentioning to the governor that we understand the difficult position he's in will go a long way. Like, people are just more receptive to listen to your argument when you acknowledge the difficulties they have. So if that's really our goal, is to provide an argument that we are advocating for change, I think that that would be important. And then I am a little bit like what Tristan said about, you know, the data doesn't speak conclus- A little bit like what Tristan said about, you know, the data doesn't speak conclusively to one thing or another. Is really hard for me because I'm kind of a black and white person. And it's. It's difficult for me because I feel like the businesses being open, is that going to change anything? As far as us having a surge, I think we're going to have a surge because of the behavior outside of businesses. So I think if we can keep people employed. And working, then that's great, but I, you know, the the other side of that. Argument is like exactly what David said, what's the difference between four people? At a restaurant table and four people in their living room, but I can tell you from personal experience that, you know, my book club is still meeting without masks. My Bible study is still meeting and they all get together in homes without masks. And I mean, I'm shocked that. I'm surrounded by groups of people that are still, I mean, I. Was talking to someone the other day on a video call and saw them pick up their children from school and they didn't have a mask on and neither did the kids. And I was just blown away. So. I think that that behavior is contributing to the spread and not necessarily. Restaurant bars and gyms being open and if we can do whatever possible to keep people working. And keeping the economy going, I think we should, and I don't know how we. Really like leverage our ability to influence human behavior. I mean, that's a question for the ages, right? And. And somehow if we can get the message across in the campaign that's going on that like whether you believe masks are effective or not, like it's keeping people at work. So, you know, even if you think it's a mute point or you you don't agree with all the stuff behind it, you know, if if you're really advocating. For the economy to grow and for businesses to stay open, these are the measures we need to take. So that's my two cents.
One of the coolest taglines that came out of the social support group when we were doing the recovery and social support was a healthy. Healthy people, healthy economy. That actually was from Margaret. And and I think it speaks to just what you're saying, you know. Mary.
Hi, my comment on the letter. I wish it were also asking for positive change. I E. The ability to to apply the point oh nine money. Lodging tax and some other things. As an emergency measure for the next year. To help businesses, to help our communities. And let us locally make that decision because that's where we need help. Our, you know, if everything.
Don't disagree.
So what I'd like to see in that letter that is not in there. Is an appeal to to emergency. In some way, look at changing the RCWs or doing a one year. You can do what you need to with these these monies. Because frankly, it's going to be surprising if we actually go through with any of the events that are planned for next year. And we need to keep, we need to have that money available to use in our communities, but. Just my opinion.
No, I if council wants that rolled into that, I I mean, the. The Governor's Office reached out to me before the Governor made the announcement on Sunday. The Governor's Office received an email from me. Saying exactly that. We started asking for this flexibility thirty days into the pandemic. So I mean, it can't hurt to reiterate it, but I would be lying if I'd said we've made any headway whatsoever. But but those those two specific pots of dollars. I mean, just again, so council's aware, we we've actually provided language. That we felt would give us the flexibility for for both the lodging tax money as well as the rural sales tax money. What to delete and what to add. And have had minimal response.
I would agree with the with Mary's comment that I think we just need to keep pounding that message. As often as we can.
No, that's fine. I think that's that's a great, great point. I'd also just point out, David, that to your point and actually some extent Stacy's. The number of conversations we'd have with Governor's staff and with the Governor. Asking for stronger messaging and enforcement. Again, probably go back as far as the request for the flexibility. For the for the rural sales tax and lodging tax money and have had a similar effect. Consistently, whether it's brought up by, actually, I was on, we were on elected calls, now we're on mayor calls. Those issues are raised and the consistent Governor's message is the same one that he gives when he does restrictions. People are trying to do well, they're doing good, for the best, majority are doing fine, call Ellen I if you got a problem. And it's not, I I don't disagree. I mean, from my perspective, it's not a, it's not an effective response for us. And it places the businesses that are doing well in the crosshairs of enforcement. Rather than relying on those that are placing those restrictions in some type of enforcement capacity.
Yeah, that's true. I heard it. An account of an interaction last week and when he was telling me about a goodwill shop or someone walked in. A mom with four or several kids, I don't know how many, no masks. And they're, I guess, pretty pretty hardcore about mask wearing in the store. And the person who was working the mask checkpoint or whatever told the the woman that she was not able to come in without a mask. And she offered her masks and she, the customer completely refused, but just completely flipped out apparently. Started, you know, attacking verbally, attacking the employee, throwing things. It's just ridiculous. And I just, I know it's a terrible position for. You know, businesses to be put in, those that are actually really mandating it. But, yeah, the only other thing, and I know it's not the Governor's problem, but it seems to me that that. Again, if we could channel the, you know, I think the word the mayor of Cleveland used the other day on Cognitiv was rebellion. There are people rebelling against these new rules in upper county and I I understand all that. I just wish that people could channel their anger and their. Energy in their more constructive ways like encouraging better mask behavior, but. What, you know, the reality is our businesses throughout county are taking, you know, they've been crushed by this. And that. At what point does the Washington congressional delegation have to step up and. Across party lines and advocate for another round of stimulus?
I was actually on a call with Congresswoman Schreier. Wednesday, raised that issue. Because I feel like they. Abdicated their responsibility. She feels that there may be, so there there's two issues that I see with the federal responsibility. One is simply that. I don't know when or if they're even going to be able to come to any kind of an agreement. I think there may be more of a shot at it, but I'm not even clear. Given what's occurring in Georgia with the Senate race that that they're going to mess with it. The other challenge for us, and I think it's the same thing and the same problem, and I think it's the piece that Mary's touching on, giving us. Local authority to to spend dollars that we have here. Is even the Governor's one hundred and twenty million or whatever he's gonna, I mean. The the liaison for the Department of Commerce, which who's been the conduit for the dollars coming into the community for businesses. Was on our call Friday, basically said, oh, yeah, well, there's money in the pipeline. We haven't decided where it's going to go. We're not deciding, haven't decided how how it's going to be invested. And we'll get back to you after Thanksgiving. I mean, it's not a criticism of her. But then the reality would be is you're getting back to us with the guidelines after Thanksgiving, which means then it's going to take how long? Before you make the application for before we solicit local application. So I mean, there's all those issues there, even with a federal response at this point. Federally, I don't think we would be, we would be lucky to see anything come in by January, mid-January. And I think even at the state level, we're going to be challenged to see something by the second week of December. I do think that they. That the restrictions are going to be extended. I think we need to anticipate that in terms of impact for our businesses. So so I'm getting a sense, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I think. I know we can dice it fine finely or slice it up very, very finely, but I think. Unless unless we're completely misreading this. I think we can expect a surge here between now and the first of the year that's going to obliterate.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think we're, I think the only thing, yeah, I think we're already seeing it.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think the numbers are going up.
I I think it's not sustainable, but I my impression is that what. We're kind of like both ends of the spectrum. We're sort of in a wait for the vaccine mode.
Right.
You got people who are not properly handling the social distancing or mask wearing. Thinking, oh, no big deal. If I get it, I'll get the vaccine or whatever. The vaccine's coming. I don't have to do anything. You got congressional delegation out there, not ours alone, but in Congress. And they're sitting on their hands for six months and now that the vaccine is in view, they seem like, oh, the pressure's off. But by the time it's widely distributed. There's not going to be a lot left, I'm afraid, you know, that's the.
No, I don't disagree. I I would I would share that that is not. Representative Schreier's perspective.
Oh, I understand that and I'm not criticizing your person on that.
Well, no, but I I want to be, I mean, just from the conversation, she's very aware. Both of the need for 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 another triple P injection as well as enhanced support for people that have been unemployed because of this.
Well, to put a point, I think I think the House passed the bill in, what was it, June? Late, it's been sitting, so, yeah.
So anything else, Nancy, good luck?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment on the letter. I would like. I guess I would, I like the letter and I I like the direction we're going. But kind of building on Stacy's comments and some things you said too about the businesses, I I would like to be more specific. About what we're asking for. In terms of the flexibility, I. My impression from council discussion was. That we were concerned about our businesses and so we're asking for flexibility for the businesses. We don't, we're not asking flexibility. For the personal. Responsibilities that people have on the groups and things of. My concern is in the messaging. To the state and to the community about what we're doing here is that people will get the idea that we don't support. The restrictions on the mass communicate, people getting together and. The numbers restrictions that the governor has put on outdoor events and and indoor events too. And you've alluded to the use of the of the social media campaign and the marketing people that we've, but. I guess I would like to see it. Very, very clear that we're asking for flexibility because we've been able to manage this so we can keep our businesses open.
Okay, just just to make sure though, Nancy, to your point, because this was a sentence I inserted after cog and and it's not in the commissioner's. Letter. But it's the second one on the last paragraph. To be clear, we understand support and promote. The actions individuals and businesses must take to ensure the health and safety of us all. What I was trying to do with that sentence was reiterate that we are not asking. To 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 ignore. The direction that the state has provided or the Health Department has provided. I can certainly be more clear there, but that was, that was a sentence inserted after. The conversations.
Okay.
Just but but just so you know, I and we can certainly be more clear about the 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 need to support the business community.
And if you add, if you add the. Yeah. Point oh nine and nail tech funding in that paragraph. Yeah, I think keeping the businesses open is critical.
Okay, so a couple of things, because it seems like we're moving to general consensus. I don't know. I might need to work with Tristan on. The wording for the community spread or not. Because honestly, it's not my language and I thought I was actually using Dr. Larson's language. That I'd heard him do speak to in about schools. The incidences that occurred in schools, I mean, that, and so I need to make, I just need that clarity of how do we state that? And if we can.
He is also in your defense, Bruce. He's also flipped those around a couple of times, but when he talks about the effect of the schools at Central, he just means. There's no secondary secondary transmission trickling from those places to the rest of the community, but the community is spread, there's community spread.
So maybe secondary transmission.
So it is. Does he say that about the businesses too, Tristan? Cause I.
No, I mean, we don't.
I thought I heard him say in his report last week that. There was no community spread from the businesses, is that?
So what, once again, if we're going to be very technical. See, the community spread is just spreading easily and sustainably in the community and that that is, that definitely what is happening. Because our cases continue to go up in our community and it's not just from one or two outbreaks. So we definitely have.
So I'm just ecstatic, I'm just ecstatic because Nancy actually just reframed exactly what I thought I heard, which is why I use the language that I use. So thank you, Nancy.
Because it's.
Well, that's the only reason I'm quite considering the supporting this, you know, is because of what Dr. Larson said.
Uh, the points that Dr. Larson is trying to articulate, it it makes most, people understand when you're saying. Everyone's heard community spread now, so they understand that when you're saying you're not getting community spread from these places, that what he means is we're not seeing. Cases from. This one and this one trickle out to the rest, but indeed there is community spread in the community where there's a spread of disease. So stick with secondary transmission for public health term accuracy. And I will remind my good doctor to be more accurate with his language use as well. He's just a doctor, guys.
Did I, I thought I saw in some recent county, the most, some recent, like in the last few days, I was looking through some county data on this. Did I read correctly the act, I don't know if it was current cases, new cases. Whatever the category was, only about ten percent central students. Does that ring a bell?
Yeah, probably less now. They they did not bring the gloom and doom like they thought they would. I mean, there was definitely an increase in the beginning where they're. They were about fifty fifty, but now, yeah, the the numbers are really low and I haven't gotten a updated report today, but. The next time that we get a report, I'll make sure from our assessment coordinator, we'll send that out to IMT and the electeds.
So they're leaving town this week and they won't be back until January. The term is over, right? So.
Yeah. We are not seeing, so we're not seeing a lot of central cases right now. We're seeing a couple of one offs here and there and we saw a couple from the prevalence testing that they did for. For that they did as an option for students, but just over this weekend, we had. Sorry, there's children yelling in the back. Just over the weekend, we had almost fifty new positives. Just from Saturday and Sunday and Friday night, so and very few of those were central students. I haven't seen the data. I don't actually know if any of them were. I'm going to assume that maybe a couple were. So we're definitely seeing. We're seeing. Exponential spread in Kittittas County again and can't, and we can't link it to Central. And we do anticipate a lot of transmission after this week due to this week and it will be from the central students.
Right, Dr. Larson's been, I think the word he used is scared.
Yeah, I think.
It's a technical health department word.
I want to add, I want to add my voice to that word because I'm scared. Last thing I need is to be. Wearing one of those stupid tubes down my throat again. Man, I still don't have my voice back.
The, yeah, and I would know too that a central leaves, that's the dorms. And as we found, actually, at the first surge or the first onset of the pandemic. There are a significant number of students who really do see and treat Ellensburg as their home community. That rent apartments and stay and don't go away. So I think it's just important to recognize that even as Central goes into their break. That there will be students leaving and Central's done an amazing job, I think of with offering the testing and having a protocol for when they return. But a number of those students are also remaining. Yeah. What do we want to do?
So I I still have a, I have a couple of questions, Tristan. I don't know if you feel comfortable answering this or not, but. I don't know if you feel comfortable answering this or not, but I, I would really value knowing what Dr. Larson thinks about us doing this.
Uh, the doc and I talked about this last week. And the doc has already given his recommendations, right, we're, we're in line with what the state's doing, cause it's the most protective of public health. So, uh, but he also understands more now than prob, than he admits ever before in his life. That electeds have different jobs than the health officer. He has one mission, and it is to reduce the transmission of disease, but the economic recovery group and what Cog is doing is trying to help our businesses survive. So um, so he did not take personal offense to this effort. Yeah, but, but he's, he's the health officer.
But Nancy, I've thought about that a lot as well too, because I think if we allow for flexibility, it puts more pressure on Dr. Larson and his requirement to shut us down.
But, but I, I, I also wanna be clear that I, before this even rolled out. I met with Tristan and Dr. Larson, uh, it's not exactly the same letter. But the, the, the frame of the letter is very similar to what we're looking at. And to Tristan's point, I don't know that Dr. Larson was ecstatic. But he was not, if he would have said, this is the worst idea I've ever seen, I, there's no way I can support this. We, we would not be having this discussion.
And he would tell you.
Right, and he, he did not say that. I mean, if anything, we had a conversation about the implications of local control, what it might mean for the health department here, where we were with contact tracing. So, so Nancy, I don't know if that answers, and, and Tristan may not be entirely comfortable saying that, but, but in my mind, the, the entire process would, would have ground to a halt. For, for the city, I mean, the commissioners are gonna do what the commissioners are gonna do. But if the, if Dr. Larson and Tristan had looked at the initial draft. And simply said, there's no way in God's green, we can, we, we, you shouldn't move this forward, this is gonna put people at risk. Um, this would not be in front of us right now.
I'm glad to hear that, I just think that we also need to acknowledge, I mean, I know that I appreciate the value of being one voice amongst seven. The commissioners have the three of them, you know, there's, there's one Dr. Larson, there's one director of public health, I mean, that's a lot of weight and stress.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure if the letter is very clear that the purpose of the local control piece. Is to try to help our businesses survive the pandemic. The economic piece of this, if, if we can make that very, very clear. That would, that would make me happy.
Okay.
I wanna add my footnote to that, which is, I'm not thrilled with this letter at all. I would really like to see it approached in a much more, can you please help us? Can you please help us in a positive way and not ask for special exemptions? Because I really believe that we are just at the, we're sitting here on the beach and that tidal wave is rolling at us. And I think we're being silly to sit here and say, well, you know, please don't do this to us, cause we're special. Because I will tell you that over these next two holidays, we're gonna get hammered with a lot of people from other places, and they're gonna share with us. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
That is a huge consideration.
Make a motion that we approve the letter with um, a few stipulations, that we include. A portion about flexibility in funding. That we change the term community spread to a term that's more appropriate to what's happening here. That we acknowledge the difficulty that the governor faces in being an elected official and that he's doing the best he can. And that our goal is unique to this group, and we are writing this letter with the intent of keeping businesses alive. Did I capture everything?
Yeah, I think.
Give you a second.
I'll second.
Okay, um, we have a motion second. To um, approve signature on the letter, subject to the following changes or edits, how about that? One, to reflect. To change language consistent with um. Appropriate health department language to reflect the uh, secondary transmission rather than community spread. That um. We include um. A statement asking for flexibility in utilization of local resources that are currently available. That would be rural sales tax and lodging taxes, I understand it. Um, and that we emphasize that we're, we're working to keep our businesses alive and thriving, well, I wouldn't say thriving, but simply alive. Um, and that there be a insertion. That indicates we appreciate. Actually, let me, what, that we appreciate the challenges and difficult decisions which are made at the state level to protect the health and safety of the citizens of the state of Washington. That I actually drafted that while we were talking, I think. Did I miss anything? Uh, there was the undermines, David, maybe you can just give me a word off.
Blanket.
Limits.
Approach.
Permits?
Permit, no, it, it, no, it's the opposite of that, it's either it's limiting or reducing our ability to.
Yeah, limiting, how about limits?
Limits is good.
Okay, so I'll just make that as a.
Also, li- line one, uh, it is no longer on this past uh, Sunday.
Oh, there is that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, question.
Do I need to do anything with those additional amendments?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
So.
One of the things that I would just put out there that for, for thought, if by some miracle of miracles this gets approved. Can we as a city encourage the board of health and the health officer to revisit. The business restaurants particularly practice and put, maybe look at limiting how many people can eat together at one table or something. You know, to try to address some of that spread, but that doesn't have anything to do with the letter.
Yeah.
A thought to put on.
That, that, I've been thinking about this a lot, I've been thinking about this for days, and my position on city council and my position in public health and my existential crisis. And um, I, I do think, finally, I think that I will end up. I will abstain from this vote today, and, and the reason will be is because I am the co-signatory on local health orders. That. Be affected by, if there is affected at the state level because of this letter. With that, I, I, I don't feel, this does not feel, the letter feels like a good compromise. It is not, it is not abandoning public health, it is not saying that lives do not mean anything to us, it is, it is saying. That we, we wanna help our businesses, and I, I do, I do support that, but I will be abstaining as a co-signatory for the local health orders.
I've got two questions about the letter. One, question one is, is the revised draft going to be circulated, do you want us to look it over one more time, what goes to?
Um, I would need Terry's direct, well, no, it's fine, but we can't all, we can't all do that.
Trust me, you don't wanna go there.
Okay, I'm satisfied with that answer. Next question.
Yeah.
Uh, if the letter is, is uh, approved, is submitted, but ultimately the board is not able to get. Individual communities to sign off and the letter doesn't go. Would we then have the option of just sending this from the city as is?
What I'm, my approach at this point, given the modifications to the letter, knowing that there's, that the letter, the, the letter we're looking at without modifications. Is going in front of Clayellum tonight, and I think uh, Kittittas and Roslyn tomorrow. Is, I will probably, I would suggest that we will need to just submit a, a city of Ellen'sburg letter.
Is it? Yeah, I, I, I understand that logistically, I, I like where we were going with it at the cog meeting last week in terms of the strength of numbers, but I get that it's challenging.
Well, I, I would submit it with whatever the commissioners are going to submit, so it would still go in as a joint. You know, you know.
Yeah, I wasn't clear, is the letter the commissioners are considering this unedited, unedited version, or is it a different one or?
They, so they approved one that's slightly different, it doesn't, for instance, it doesn't, and it. It quotes very outdated data.
What about the, what about the, the tone that we've, we've softened, is it, I mean, are we on strength with that then?
Their tone was similar, they, I mean, the real, okay, so the reality is, is the draft started here with. So, 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 so a lot of it is similar, but they did do a few edits. Um, they're also, but my major concern with where they went was that they were using very, very outdated uh, metrics. To Tristan's point, I mean, it's changing daily, but their quote was one thirty-one over, one, one, one hundred and thirty-one up per hundred thousand. We're over, I don't even know what we're, we'd be now, but um, uh, Dr. Larson indicated we were over two hundred on Friday. Um, so when I did our revi, I mean, this revision pulled any reference to where we were going with the metric out, cause it felt like it was such a moving target.
Yeah, yeah. Well, to Mary's earlier point, any numbers we state today are gonna be obsolete in two weeks, trying to put all of our eggs in the basket of, look how well we've done.
Right, it's, it's not, right, so I mean, I think, what I appreciate is, I think ultimately going back to focus on how do we support our businesses as well as keep people healthy. Is, is really what the, what the, what the underlying message is, or what the core message is.
Would there be an opportunity for you to get this to those other two municipalities so they could at least have the option?
I can probably get it to Roslyn and Kittittas, but I can't get it, I don't think I'll be able to get it to Clayellum. Uh, because I think theirs is a. I think it's at six this evening, I, I'll, I'll reach out to the mayor and, and see, just to let him know.
Yeah, even just an awareness that we've made some changes.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I would do, I mean, what I'm going to do is, what I was doing was, would be, as soon as we're done, I'll just reach out and say. Here's, yeah, here's some changes that, that in terms of direction, the core of where we're going, and here's some things you might wanna emphasize, or you might. You know, I don't, I don't know how we'll work it, I mean, they're, they're. Again, going back to how we're communicating, we seem to be communicating better than we have historically uh, with other communities in the, in the county.
Okay, well, I think we should let you get to it.
Yeah, sounds good.
Can we vote, please?
Yeah, yeah, so we do have a motion in second for the, to, to approve mayor's signature on the, a letter, you're gonna, basically, I'll make the changes per the, per the motion. And then, and then put that, uh, and then actually either sign it as a signal signature, or if we have agreement with the other municipalities and commissioners. Willing to use the letter that we've just done, then we would do a joint submission to the governor's office, or to the governor, actually. Uh, is there any further discussion? I just wanna say one thing, not to drive Mary crazy, because we're now over an hour in this thing, but.
I have no idea how I'm hurting, Bruce, I need to move.
Okay, but I just wanna go back to Stacy's point and, and honor this process that we just went through. I mean, it's just absolutely incredible, folks, I mean, we, there are seven people here, all of us chimed in, all of us have worked together to put. To reflect what we feel is best for this community. It was, it's, it's, it's a good process, it's a good piece to be part of a council that can have this kind of conversation. Without retreating to corners um, or finger pointing, and so I, I wanna thank everybody. For the willingness to have that and the manner and tone in which we just had this conversation, it, it's really, really, really cool. Um, so with that, we do have a motion in second to adopt the uh. The letter with the changes as indicated in the motion, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I two vote I, opposed abstentions.
Same.
So, um, so that motion passes with one abstention, uh, council member lamb. With that, um, I think we've ended the agenda, right? So let's go away, thank you again.
Thank you. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah.